To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we all close our eyes. Lord, we just want to thank you for allowing us to see another day. Thank you for allowing us to make it here safely. We pray that you allow us to have a wonderful meeting and we thank you for all of the children that are doing such excellent jobs. We pray that you just continue to keep our schools safe, keep our children safe, keep our staff safe. And we pray that you just let your will be done in our lives and in this school year. And it's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. That's the time. At this time, we will have our presentations, recognition of students with perfect scores on the Florida Standards Assessment or the End of Course Assessment for the 2018-2019 school year.
Good afternoon.
Mrs. Renee Lamorale.
How is everybody?
Good.
We're great. Thank you.
We are here to award students who earned perfect scores on this past spring's state exams. That's a huge feat.
It sure is.
I'm gonna tell you, it's not a feat I can even guarantee I could have done. You know, or any of us adults in this room, we've said often. I also want to say before we present these awards that we had over 4,000, I think it was 4,052 students who received a letter from the governor because they made a Level III or higher. And that's just in grades three through 10.
That was very nice.
So that's a big accomplishment also. And I'm gonna call Ms. France up at this time. She's gonna call names and we'll hand certificates. These students scored absolutely perfect.
Wow.
On the state exam this spring.
Amazing.
Amazing.
It's like getting a perfect score on the ACT or ASAT.
Exactly.
Yeah, I got a lot of those and did it. I'm kidding. Go ahead.
With whose help?
So I've been trying to meet the students as they come in so I can ensure that I'm saying their names correctly. But if I didn't get to meet you, please forgive me if I've misstated your name. So we're gonna do these up by school. So if there's a school representative that would like to come up as well, that would be great. We're gonna start with Browning Pierce Elementary School. And we'd like to congratulate Aiden Mosley, who had a perfect score on the FSA 4th grade mathematics assessment.
Way to go!
Aiden, if you'll go stand by Ms. Nelson, that'd be great. All right.
Awesome, Aiden.
Next, we're gonna go with C.H. Price Middle School, and we are going to honor Roy Collins, who had a perfect score on the 5th grade mathematics assessment in 5th grade last year, and B. Gator Palmquist in the 5th grade mathematics assessment last year, and they are currently students at Price.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Wow. Congratulations, Roy.
Yes.
From C.L. Overterf, both of these students had perfect scores at their elementary school last year. Artemis Edson in 5th grade mathematics, and Walker Huddleston from 5th grade mathematics as well.
I would like to point out that it seems like an overrepresentation of young men.
We're about to change that.
There's gonna be some girls. There's gotta be here somewhere.
And from Crescent City High School, Brianna Unruh for a perfect score on the 10th grade ELA assessment last year. From James A. Long Elementary School, we would like to honor Michaela Campbell, who had a perfect score in 3rd grade ELA, English Language Arts, I'm sorry. And Laura Lee Perry for a perfect score in 3rd grade mathematics.
I think the girls are gonna win.
From Jenkins Middle School, we have many students who are going to be able to get this assessment, this score. We have LaShanti Brinson, who got a perfect score in 7th grade mathematics and the civics assessment.
Wow.
And the teachers are here to accept for the students. Israel Coring also had a perfect score in the civics assessment. Angel Diaz, who I know is here, had a perfect score in 7th grade mathematics assessment. Angel Jimenez was a perfect score for civics. Zabir Khalid was a perfect score also for civics. Aleah McKnight, another perfect score in civics. This is the heat. And Zaminian Thomas for a perfect score in civics. At Kelly Smith Elementary School, we would like to honor Harley Strickland for a perfect score in 3rd grade mathematics. At Melrose Elementary School, we would like to honor Jordan Anderson for a perfect score in 5th grade mathematics. And Charles Rumple in 4th grade mathematics. At Palaca High School, Paris Posey has a perfect score in 8th grade mathematics assessment. And Ms. Huff, I don't know if Jessica Rayborn is here for the perfect score in 10th grade ELA as well. No, okay. She's from our Putnam Virtual School. And Q.I. Roberts had perfect scores from students. Acadia Burns in 6th grade ELA. Jacob Hines in civics. And Manami McNair in biology. I want to thank you all for coming, and thank you, adults that are here representing your schools, and we appreciate everything.
We want to get pictures.
I think so. Everyone stay up.
Madam Chair, do you want to stand down there with us?
If I do get next to this.
There you go.
Interlet.
Kids in the front.
I'm trying to remember if Al Barron who ever got an award for anything, it looks like.
Good representation.
Yes, it was.
And I don't think Charlie ever had a perfect.
No, Charlie was all good.
Again, before you leave, we just want to commend you and say thank you. And to the parents, we thank you because we realize that with your support, you encourage them to do the things necessary, the homework and the extra credit or whatever it takes. And so it does show up on the test, and we appreciate you. Yes, we do. And at this time, parents and students, if you would like to leave, you're free to do so.
This is awesome. And I'm sorry, and the mom was telling me, she said, "I don't know if the school was bringing him." I said, "If you didn't give him permission," I said, "unless it's a field trip, they can't." And she thought he was gonna be here. But, and I wish they'd have thought about that. Jenkins, the kid is still in school at Jenkins. And she thought they were bringing him.
That gum good?
Jenkins should have taken care of that.
Yeah. Yeah, and they had quite a few. They had like six or seven in there.
That's the first time I've had a day. Don't slap me again.
Well, there went our audience.
Well, that's what it's about.
Absolutely.
Without them, don't need us, do they?
That's right.
You know it.
Okay, at this time, we are ready for our public hearing. Amendment to Policy Number 0153, appointment. All right, do we get a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we, I want to say we just approved this. We don't have to approve it for advertising, do we, Charlie?
This is for approving. This is the vote on it.
All right, I would like to make a motion that we approve Superintendent's recommendation.
My second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Buckles and second by Mrs. Pickens that we accept Amendment to Policy Number 0153, appointments. At this time, we have the roll call.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any public comments? No public comments? All right, we will move into our consent agenda. We'll start with you.
Go ahead and see if any.
We'll start with you, Mrs. Pickens.
Um, I, all my questions were answered. I'm good.
Okay.
I'm fine.
I'm fine?
Nothing to go on.
Uh, Ms. Odom answered all of my questions prior to the meeting, so I'm fine.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
My second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Buckles that we approve the consent agenda, and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Hearing none. Motion carries. 5-0. We do not have any emergency items listed. Okay? No discussion of unfinished business. Our new business, at this time, we will prepare for our presentation and discussion and actions on Edge's School Improvement Plan. At this time, if you will come.
Brandon's been punished again. He's back right here doing his little... Good to have you, Brandon.
Good afternoon to the Board of Putnam County School District. Thank you for the opportunity to allow Putnam Edge to present our school improvement plan for the school year 2019-2020, where our model is building above sea level. Each member of the board should have received a copy of our school improvement plan, our school SIP. And so I'm going to briefly go over the overview of it and entertain questions, if any, after the presentation. So we are a, our demographic information, we are an active charter school, high school servicing 9th through 12th graders in a general ed education environment. We are a Title I school. Our 2018-2019 economically disadvantaged rate was 100%. And our SS subgroups represented are Black African-American students, economically disadvantaged students, as well as students with disability, and our Caucasian students. The PowerPoint presentation that you see here is a historical analysis of our school grade from the inception all the way up to the current year, which is 2018-19 school year. Our mission at Putnam Edge High School is our Putnam Edge students will explore the unfamiliar through critical thinking, develop individual accountability, role students utilizing cooperative learning, engaging with community partners. Our vision at Putnam Edge is Putnam Edge High School endeavors to launch scholars into Putnam County and beyond as pioneers and architects of the future. Our leadership team is comprised of myself and an assistant principal, along with some information about myself and previous positions. I was a regional director of education overseeing 18 charter schools across the state of Florida for a charter school network based out of Florida. I was a director of education in Manatee County for alternative education, as well as a principal and assistant principal in Pinellas County Public School System. I will also, my relevant experience includes School Leadership Fellow for the Center of Educational Excellence in Alternative Ed. I was a founding board member of University Prep based out of St. Petersburg, Florida. I was also a teacher as leader mentor for the Institute of Tali. And then I also was a Teach Like a Champion strategist and as well as a pro-ed facilitator for teacher professional development. My assistant principal is Dr. Claudette Smith, who has administrative experience at Lakewood Elementary School, Sandy Lane Elementary School, as well as a elementary school teacher teaching 5th grade ELA and social studies. She was also a new teacher mentor as well. And her accolades are presented as such. She holds certification out of Delaware State as a principal and assistant principal. She is, she has an EESOL endorsement, a Florida professional certificate in K6 education, as well as experience teaching abroad in the United States Virgin Islands. Our school data and information. So here you will see a description of comparison chart between the 2019 school year in terms, in a, I would say, a comparison with our 2008 school year. So you have our school data as such for ELA achievement. We had 11% ELA achievement. We had 19% in ELA learning gains. We did not have any percentages towards the component of ELA lowest 25 percentile, nor did we have any math achievement this past school year, nor did we have any math gains at a 0%. And then math lowest percentile, again, 0%. Science achievement, we was at 13% this past school year, and our social studies achievement was at 35%. From these data points, we can conclude that our students are in dire need of intensive reading support in both ELA and math, including more instructional time and strategic intervention. Students are in need of comprehension in science, comprehensive science and learning experience with curriculum that is aligned to the Florida state standards. Parents are satisfied when our school-to-family communication is consistent and ongoing. Parents' satisfaction will increase as student achievement and learning increase. Our school-wide strategic initiatives at Edge. This year, we restructured the building by restaffing over 95% of our teacher body. We focused on our teachers in a way that we're providing them with intensive coaching, modeling support, professional development on a weekly, quarterly, additional planning days, and significant summer starting time for planning.
Could you tell us where this is in our handout? It's, we can't, it's hard to read that, and I'm trying to find it in here.
So this particular slide was just an added update to provide a combination of all the information in the school SIP, when we talk about some of the focus areas. And this particular slide is focused on teachers in general. Once I get to the next slide, I can identify what page the information is coming from.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Interventions for students. And again, this section for intervention of students is also coming from our focus area in terms of what we stated we were gonna do for this school year in terms of getting the academic achievement and student growth. So one of our focuses, additional tiered intervention blocks focused on literacy, and then mandatory tutoring, credit recovery, and mandatory Monday credit recovery and tutoring, and then also implementing the MTSS/PBIS process. Again, all of this information comes from our focus area and how we're going to plan to address those issues. So take extrapolating that information from the SIP into a more, I say, more concise presentations that are reading through all of the verbiage. Our assessment components for evaluation and learning. We recently purchased USA Test Prep for formative assessment creation to supplement classroom data. Renaissance Learning, which is a STAR data, to assess students on an annual basis for testing them on an annual basis in math and in ELA.
Did you say annual? Is that just?
So the goal is this year, we're going to test them, and I meant to say, rephrase that, on a semester basis. So we're gonna test them first in the first semester and in the second semester to see where they are from semester to semester. So we will do a semester exam for math and reading coming up soon in the month of October, and then we will reassess once they return after the holiday break in January.
And this will be where you will be providing the tutoring based on the results you get from October?
Absolutely. So this will provide a baseline for examining what intense support and to identify what students need more intense support based on this testing data. One of the things that the Renaissance Learning STAR assessment does, it provides a, what I call a student DNA. And what it does, it provides a prescribed transcript on where that student is academically. And so it gives us, it provides us with tools that we need to, for instance, skills that we need to work on with that particular student. So by the time they come back in January, we should have did enough tutoring and provided enough support to meet those learning deficits based on that prescribed transcript, and then place them back into a testing environment, see if they actually, if the interventions and support actually worked for that student. And that will be based on their ability to master that particular skill when they sit for the exam again.
And this is how you will, for lack of a better word, filter in the mandatory tutoring on that Monday?
Correct.
Wherein Monday was more or less a choice?
Exactly.
Of me coming. Now I do not have a choice. Based on what you saw?
Absolutely.
I needed in October. I am now required to come?
Absolutely.
Monday. Okay, for the tutoring. Okay.
We have time to ask a question.
Go right ahead.
Okay, so what is the, like, the correlation with the FSA test and this Renaissance Learning?
So Renaissance Learning is, the standards are aligned to what students normally see on the FSA testing. It gives them similar questions, and the question increased in rigor as the number of questions that the student answers correctly. So as the student answered the questions correctly, they'll get a harder question after so many other questions. If the student answers so many questions incorrect, it scales them back or regresses them to another easier question. And so it really gives us the ability to really look at the particular skills that are needed, necessary to move this student from benchmark to benchmark.
So is it the, is that how they test? That information is like right there?
Yes. So what happens is with Renaissance Learning, after the student has tested, typically they'll get 40 to 45 questions on the ELA exam. And if I'm not mistaken, the last time I looked at it, it was 36 questions on the math exam. After that student has tested, we can then pull a report that gives us a verbatim transcript on the skills that were tested and the skills that need improvement. And then it will place them whether they're on grade level or somewhat in between grade level and steps that they are in terms of being in the red. So it goes from red, yellow, to green. Our continuous school improvement model that we decided to use for our research-based model, and again, this is gonna be found when we're talking about the rationale of our school improvement and what evidence-based strategy we're going to use to implement to move the students academically. And we're gonna use the gradual release model where we are explicitly providing instruction, modeling the instruction, guided practice with collaboration, and independent practice. And that comes in the form of what is considered the I-do-we-do approach, where we are creating a blended model with online-based instruction via our online curriculum, which is Apex, and direct instruction. So the teachers can truly begin to work to provide even intense support for students within the classroom from a blended learning model, and allowing themselves to turn from the teacher to facilitator and providing more intense one-on-one support by doing this. And with the blended model, it allows us to really provide differentiated instruction for our students who are more advanced than others in the course, and allow for those students to continue on at an accelerated pace with the curriculum and have, and the student, and the teacher becomes a facilitator and provide that one-on-one support with those students in a group setting within the classroom for those that are struggling or need an additional push. So we're gonna, we implemented this model. We implemented this model at the beginning of the school year in our pre-planning session, and it has really just taken off in the building and making sure that we're not only tracking this data to inform what students go into the mandatory Monday tutoring, but also bringing the parents in and having a dialogue as well.
So then the teachers have been trained?
Mm-hmm.
In this I-do-we-do?
Yes, absolutely.
And you-do type?
Absolutely.
Strategy. Okay. We're just concerned, I mean, it's great, but we want to make sure that the teachers themselves are comfortable with it, are knowledgeable of it, and know how to do it, so that we can see these results?
Absolutely.
That you're talking about.
Absolutely.
And I feel it can be accomplished, but we need to make sure that they have what they need.
Absolutely. And one of my biggest focuses as the principal of Putnam Edge is making sure that we're providing consistent walkthroughs. So my assistant principal does at least two walkthroughs on each teacher throughout the week, and we're providing, and we're having that dialogue with those individual teachers to make sure that whatever tweaks we need to adjust, that we're adjusting to ensure that our students are getting the biggest bang out of the instruction that we're delivering in the classroom. And so with our weekly PLCs and professional development, it's just a re-opportunity to reteach and resharpen those skills that are, that may be lacking in some areas, and also looking at trends among our instructional staff to see what, if any, within this model, what do we need to focus on primarily?
And so, speaking of your instructional staff, you are fully staffed?
Yes. Currently, we have seven teachers now. And that's including myself because I decided at the, because we had a teacher that could not relocate, and it was a social studies class. And I decided, because I couldn't find someone right away, because I am certified in social studies, I will not allow a sub or long-term sub going to a course that I can step in and make sure that our students are getting what they need. The next slide is our comparison and our, well, it will show the outcomes again for our components of our school grade as well as our targets. Now, this information is not inside of the, in school improvement plan itself. This was an amended to what we've put into the school improvement plan from an outcome standpoint to how do we address and what are the targets that we are expecting to hit for this school year. And so this prescribed transcript, we got from the district, and we decided that it was a good tool to implement, and so we're gonna address that with you guys today. So based on our achievement for EL, Language Arts, our outcomes were 11%. This school target, we're targeted to hit 40% for this school year. For our math, we were at 0%. This year, we are targeted to hit 35%. Science was 13% this past school year. For this school year, we're looking at hitting 35%. And then for social studies, our outcomes percentage was 35 in this component for last school year. This year, we're raising that bar to 41%. And then also our graduation rate, we were at a 59% this past school year. We're looking to increase that to 70%. Our college and career acceleration percentage for the past school year was 26%, and we're looking to increase that to 30%.
Do you have a copy of this for us?
I can provide you with a copy after this presentation. I can provide you a copy after this presentation. Our targets for student learning gains, our English language arts learning gains, our outcomes for this past school year was nineteen percent. Our targeted goal for this school year is forty-one percent. We did not have any English language learners in the lowest twenty-five percentile, and so, we put NA there. For our math learning gains, we had zero percent, and this, our targeted percentage for this school year is forty-one percent, and we did not have any students in the lowest twenty-five percentile, so that was a NA there.
So, you had no students identified-
Yes.
In the lowest twenty-five percent in the whole school?
The whole school, yes ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Swift?
Yes.
As you've been giving us the numbers of what your goal is for the coming year. Now, the forty-one percent is good because on the SFA federal index, it says overall federal index below forty-one percent of all students. So, anything below the forty-one percent will probably net us another F. So, and I understand, you know, how we sometimes set goals that are attainable, but in this case, and I believe in the back of your mind, you are shooting for the forty-one percent-
Correct.
But you're saying thirty-five percent and the twenty percent, but, okay, I'm, it's out there.
Well, my question is, will these targets get you a C?
The targets, based on our focus, we, after doing the calculations, if we hit these targets as such, we will get back to a C. The goal, the reason for these particular targets is to really, again, set those SMART goals, what can really be attainable. But obviously, like you said in the back of my head, I'm expecting them to do even higher than that, especially with the levels of support and intensive intervention that we're providing. But that's just a baseline target, but I'm expecting our staff and the communication to my staff is to go beyond that. But as a SMART goal and what's attainable and what is realistic, that's where we came in, came in at, but I'm expecting my staff to do, to move the needle higher than that.
Okay, and the enrollment?
Currently, we had seventy-six kids.
Seventy-six, okay. All right, go ahead, and as-
So, our SFA federal index planning, pretty much on this PowerPoint, it says lists the SFA federal index subgroups that are below forty-one percent. Those individual subgroups consist of our Black and African-American students and our economically disadvantaged students. Which subgroup will be prioritized this school year? Obviously, the priority group for this school year is our Black and African-American students, and we will focus on the component that will give us the most significant amount of growth, most significant percentage of component points towards our school grade, which is English language arts, learning gains, and math gains. And again, this particular slide is not in the actual SIP, but it was provided to me to use during this presentation. One area of focus that will address the priority, that prioritizes our subgroups, again, is our English learning gains and our math learning gains, and again, utilizing the evidence-based strategy, the explicit instructional model, the gradual release model. And that's the overview of our school improvement plan. Any questions or concerns?
Yes, I have several questions, and then I have a request.
Okay.
My first question, do you have a counselor, a school counselor that works with your students?
Not on staff.
Okay. Well, who sits down with your kids and, you know, when they come in as a freshman and say, this is what you're going to need to graduate? Who does that? Do you do that?
We know, I normally do that as well, but we do have consultant services with a young lady who provides services to us in terms of scheduling and looking at transcripts and providing additional support with her years of experience and making sure that we have our graduates on track.
Who does that?
And her name is Delia Hunt. She's based out of Latrell County.
Okay, okay. So, how often, how many times a year do you sit down with the students and, like, say, after first semester and they failed the first semester of English one, you know, and say, okay, you got to make this up and?
Well, this year, we're doing some things a lot slightly different. So, our ongoing meetings are not on, are pretty much before each now week's is up. Right now, we pulled our list of hot students yesterday, and we started having dialogue so that we are having a quick response to our students who may not be engaged to the educational environment or may have some other outliers that present themselves that will impede their ability to be academically engaged. And so, we're doing it on a regularly and consistent basis because we meet every week. We're having dialogue and pulling those students on a weekly basis just to make sure that we actually have a pulse, a hand on them throughout this process because it's imperative that we not meet, we meet often as possible with these students to pull in the parent engagement as well.
Okay. My next question is a question that your answer is going to lead to another question, if that makes sense. What kind of class schedule are you on? For instance, are you on a six-day period, six-period day? Are you on a four-by-four? Are you on an alternating day schedule? How are your classes set up?
Our schedule is a six-period schedule, four days a week, Tuesday through Friday, and typically changes from semester to semester.
It changes?
From semester to semester depending on what the student needs, individual graduation needs.
So, not every student in your school is on the same schedule?
No, they're on a six-period schedule, but their individual classes may change from semester to semester.
Okay. So, what that's leading to then for me, does every student in your school have a full schedule, have a full six-period a day schedule?
Correct, with the exception of two students currently due to their parents' need and desire that is in the best interest that she felt for her particular students.
Okay. So, that leads me to ask, are your students taking the classes that they need to take prior to the FSA so they will have been taught what's covered? Are they taking, for instance, Algebra I and Geometry before the FSA? Are they taking Biology and Physic Chemistry before the, you know?
Absolutely, yes.
That was on the mind, so.
Yes. Currently, if I can give you an example of what a particular student's schedule will look like, most of our students are enrolled in an intensive reading class as well as their particular prescribed English class. If their, if a student transcript requires them to take an additional math or math that they, that does not attach to ELC, that's typically college-ready math, or another math elective, another math course that we offer. But most of our students are enrolled in the ELC courses that they need to take for that school year and to be able to perform by the time they get to the ELC at the springtime.
Okay, so every year, every student has an English, and every year, every student has a math?
I can only, I can only tell you from my time at Pundamatch, being that it hasn't been that long, yes. Moving forward, that is the prescribed typical schedule, yes.
Okay, so that leads me to my request. As a sitting board member, I am requesting the following from you. And Pat, I don't know if you need to write this down for me?
All right, could we hold your request?
No, because I want to-
I mean, because we're going to, I mean, we have some requests as well, but let us get our questions. Are these suggestions for them to come back to us? Okay, let me hear.
Chairman overrules you.
No.
She can overrule me, but-
No, I'm not going to overrule you. Go ahead.
These aren't suggestions. These are just something I want to see.
Okay, all right.
I want to see your master schedule-
Absolutely.
In a form that I can understand, you know, what each teacher's teaching each period.
Absolutely.
Okay? Then, I would like to have a list of your teachers and what their certifications are, okay?
Absolutely.
And then, I would like to see your progress monitoring data.
Absolutely.
And then, the last thing, I would like to make a request that DOE conduct an instructional review at Edge like they do our schools every year.
Absolutely.
And that's what I was leading to. What you're saying is what we are going to request them to do as well. So, some of it has been covered. Yeah, some of it has been covered, and these are things that are going to not hurt Edge but are going to help Edge and help us to help you to-
Absolutely.
As we monitor along, along the way, and that's what I was leading to. I wasn't trying to cut you off. I just wanted to, okay.
Mr. Swift, didn't?
I'll forget.
Okay, I was just, you mentioned Renaissance Learning earlier. Are you hiring Renaissance Learning to handle parts of the instructional program?
No. We're just using the assessment piece, but most of the training will be either virtual training or myself because I've actually utilized it in other counties that has been successful with Renaissance Learning.
But I just worry about copyright and stuff like that. I just was curious. I heard that, and they're a big, they're a big group, but it's just something that I was curious about.
So, that is your progress monitoring tool is Renaissance?
Okay, all right. One of the questions that I'd like to ask, Mr. Swift, I'm looking at your subgroups, your students with disability, your Black, your White, and free reduced lunch. And of course, as we look, the white subgroup is doing what needs to be done so far, you know, from the past history we have. My question is, our students with disability, what kind of support are we providing for those students?
We're providing support through our ESC specialists. We do have staff, ESC personnel on board who, again, provides those services to the students, and also, she is really good at providing access points to those core teachers so that they're not only getting support from her, but they're also getting support within their core classes as well.
Okay, and so, she takes care of the IEPs as well and meeting with the parents?
Absolutely.
Great, great. And so, that will be one of the teachers that will be listed, so that'll take care of that. As we're looking for all the questions, Mr. McGinnis, y'all can jump in at any time. Okay. And we've taken care of teachers being trained.
I was searching, and day one, I guess, with the Edge School, what is actually the charter state? I mean, you have a vision and you have goals, but what is the charter state? I've never been able to-
When you say the charter state and?
When they started Edge, they had to have a statement for their charter as far as, you know, you're responsible for holding accountable what the students are doing, and you have to have some kind of statement in your charter. Is there one documented or?
When you look at the charter, it really doesn't state exactly what our stated intended purpose is and what we're going to do in terms of student, actual student engagement. When we look at the student accountability section of our school charter, it just pretty much alludes to the fact that we will be in line and really implement according to the district policy and rules.
And I understand that you are taking part in our principals' meeting-
Yes, ma'am.
Which is, which is great and, you know, because you could certainly, you know, share and gain some things, so it won't be like you just get coming and gaining, but you will be able to-
Absolutely.
You know, assist us or share some of the things you're doing with others.
I have a question while she's-
Yes.
What does a normal classroom, is it mainly teacher-led or is it computer? Do you use that Odyssey program?
So, we use something similar to Odyssey. We use Apex that provides pretty much all of our curriculum items. So, our typical classroom setting will be in a blended learning model where you will have, for example, the teacher providing the direct instruction for the first half of the class, and depending on the activity or the skill for the day, she will break them off into different groups depending on who needs the support and different students that typically can accelerate through the content after the content has been taught. So, when we talk about the gradual release process, it really allows us to align our class more in a structured center-type environment where the teachers can, again, release those students that can really perform and handle the cognitive lifting with the, with the content, and then provide more wraparound care within the classroom for those struggling students.
And it's aligned to the FSA standard?
Yes.
Let me clarify, Mr. McGinnis, did you need to see a copy of the charter? And I believe we have, can you get them a copy?
I can get the notebooks in Sharon's office.
Okay. Would you like to see that now or is that?
No, I'll see it.
Just way wrong, okay.
Yes.
I have a question.
No ma'am, you go ahead.
Are any of your classes set up to where there's more than one subject being taught in a class, say, or is there English one and two taught together, English separate?
Separated.
So, the content is different? It's according to the state of Florida's curriculum?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, and then we'll go back to what Mrs. Crawford raised, the issue of making suggestions that would help us-
Absolutely.
That would definitely help you and the students some ways that you could come back to the board and give us updates, most especially, you mentioned in October, you're going to give the assessment, a diagnostic test, and then you would have the results, I guess, maybe at the end of October, or is it immediate?
It's immediately.
Immediate. So, one of the suggestions I would like to add to what Mrs. Crawford has shared is that at our November 5th meeting, you prepare to come back, share that, that data with us, the findings, and what it is you are doing-
Absolutely.
Et cetera.
I've enjoyed listening to you. I haven't really had time to get to meet you yet, but I look at your background in Manatee County and whatnot, and it looks like you're, you're in a little different area of this part of the state that has been interesting.
Thank you.
Okay, and Mrs. Crawford did ask, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Do y'all use Skyward?
We do use Skyward, yes ma'am.
It just hit me. I was, I was looking at, reflecting on your indicators that kind of give you an idea as to if the student will or will not be successful, and you, you had, I think, four students with two or more indicators, and one being attendance and another, I think, was Level One or something of that nature. And so, you had two in the grades nine and 10 that would be tested, and those students have been identified.
Yes.
The teachers know who those students are there, what you call, I think, your hot students possibly, and so, some things that you're going to do with them, and so, when you come back November 5th, if you can-
Touch on those.
Touch on those things as well.
Absolutely.
An update and, and-
On what? I was going to write it down.
Okay. He's going to come back in October, I mean, in November, at our November 5th meeting, and share with us the data findings from, yes. And then, he's also going to talk about students with two or more indicators and what is being done and progress monitoring of those students and how they are progressing.
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, the question has been answered. I think it was Mrs. Pickens that asked, asked, what are you using for progress monitoring? And you did tell Mr. Buckers and herself the Renaissance, and you said Apex, and they're both aligned pretty much with?
Absolutely.
Could we have a curriculum guide with standards? I mean, we could have that.
Absolutely.
Okay. You're, go ahead, go ahead.
And one other thing that I think would be really beneficial to both everybody is to, for you to come back and reflect on how this is, you know, maybe even after the semester to give us a, you know, where you-
Absolutely.
I mean, I know that that's kind of redundant because you've just been there in November.
No, it's a few months later.
You know, that'll give you, the end of the semester, you can tell us how many seniors are on target.
Absolutely. You're absolutely right, yeah.
Is there a possibility that you could request an instructional review team to come in and to kind of, all right, that's one of yours? Okay, so you're writing them down so that we can give them to, and if, and we don't want to overwhelm you for that first meeting. meeting, but we just kind of want to see where we're headed, and moving toward at least getting above that 41%.
Now, based on one of the requirements of the implications of a school grade of being an F, we are contracting with a consultant out of Gainesville, out of the University of Florida, to provide us with consultation services, so if you want him to provide or get a detailed report based on his findings, would that suffice?
Yes.
From Dr. Olson?
Alright, kind of see what he saw, and the recommendations he made, and how you are addressing that.
Okay.
I don't think that's the same thing as an instructional review, so I would like to make sure...
Where they go in and actually look, okay, alright.
That's not the same thing.
And when you do, you and your assistant do your walkthrough, because you've shared with us that she does two a day, and that's great, what, I think, two a week?
Two, per teacher.
Oh, per teacher, okay, alright, what are you using to guide you in as to what you're looking for?
Well, one of...
Observation or anything of that nature, what tool are you using to kind of record what you're seeing, so that you could meet with me if I am not, you know...
So one of, one of the tools that we are using is considered to, is called the Elliot, which is also aligned to our Advanced Ed accreditation for walkthroughs, so the Elliot 2 will informs our formative assessment, which is a Danielson Rubrik model for teacher evaluation and formative assessment, and so the walkthrough form, which is considered the Elliot, will work hand-in-hand with our school accreditation with Advanced Ed, as well as inform our visits, when we sit down to do our formal evaluations with our teachers.
Okay. Alright, Mrs. Crawford, you were writing them down, would you read them off the ones that we are going to request, and then, if you would then give that to Mr. Swift, we would appreciate it.
No problem.
So we've requested so far your master schedule, a list of your teachers with their areas of certification, and what they're presently teaching, your progress monitoring data, we've requested that DOE do an instructional review, we've requested that you share your October data at the November 5th meeting, just to kind of, you know, give us the findings of your assessment, I think Ms. Gilliard requested that students with two or more indicators, that we would like to know how they are progressing, we would like to have a copy of your curriculum guide, and then we also suggested returning at the end of the semester with a data update.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Swift? Alright, at this...
If we did want to visit, do we get with Ms. Freeman, or we, can we just show up?
You can call the school, and we'll set it up, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And we won't all converge on that one time.
Not a problem.
We're just...
Thank you, Mr. Swift.
We won't stand in the sun.
Not a problem, absolutely, thank you guys, thank you again, absolutely.
The very detailed, detailed report, thank you. At this time, I'm going to call Mr. Jonathan Hinky, if you will come up and just share with us the monitoring discussion component, so that will help us as a board to understand a little better, and it may be beneficial to Edge as well.
Absolutely, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
So one of the things that district staff had provided you was an alignment to what Dr. Swift presented today, as well as what was in their school improvement plan, so you have that alignment, so you knew where to find everything of the nine things that are required in their school improvement plan. When it comes to monitoring, I think the list that you have created amongst yourselves is very similar and not unreasonable, when we consider what our other schools, traditional schools that are in a D or F are required to do. Regarding your request for the instruction review, I will certainly reach out to our differentiated accountability team and ask them to conduct that, they have, October 4th is scheduled for two of our schools that need an instruction review, so I'm thinking probably sometime in October, they may have time to be able to do that, and I will have them, I'll give them your contact information, so they can schedule a day for you.
Alright.
The other things are all requests you made of Edge, I just want to clarify a couple of things, one, when we look at the targets, we're going to offer to share a school grade monitoring spreadsheet that we provide all of our high schools, that helps them to calculate and predict their school grade for the year, but it's important to remember that your graduation rate and your college and career acceleration lag by a year, so based on their cohort of, we believe, 14 students graduated last year, and about six or seven may have actually, six or seven of the 14 may have graduated on time, or we're not sure exactly what their graduation rate is, but it looks like it'll be lower than 59, so that, that percentage is already set in stone when we think about their next school grade that they'll get, so his target for 70 would be for the following year, even though you're looking at the current students, because it lags in the school grade. The other clarification is that, because they are so small, when we look at a cell like the lowest 25%, he may indeed have a couple of students, but you have to have at least 10 students in order for a cell to be generated in your school grade, so they probably have, in ELA and math, you probably have some students that would classify, but it's maybe only like three or four in your school, and so they're not going to, you know, that school grade cell will be blank, so that's just something I wanted to make sure you understood, when you look at the targets that he shared today. So regarding monitoring, I think you have a list of things that you've requested in a timeline, and we'll, we can work with Dr. Swift on scheduling some of those things that need to be scheduled, the only other thing I would just share with you is that you have a responsibility today to act?
Yes.
And so you can approve their school improvement plan, you can approve their school improvement plan with some conditions, if you feel like something was not met under those nine items, or you can deny the plan, and then when you vote, you need to vote to also approve the monitoring requests that you came up with as a board.
Okay.
So any questions about your responsibility, and I did provide you, as sponsor, I provided you that state board rule again, the one that I went over with you at the last board meeting, so that you have that in your packet to look at those nine things.
We're just relying on you guys, Jonathan and the Instructional Division, to keep your end of it going, and just keep us updated.
Yes, and I will say, Dr. Swift has been very responsive to us, and we have shared some things with him, and we'll, we'll share a couple of other things that we use with our other schools, it's his responsibility to fill them out and use them and share, but we can certainly provide a couple of those things for him.
Okay, and Mr. Swift, just, just sharing this information with you, we as a district have experienced success following these things, Mosley being one of, a prime example of when we do these things, possibly this is the outcome, so certainly, that's what we're looking for, to assist, to aid you, to, to lead your school to the success that is there, the potential to pull it out of the students, so by no means is anything given to, to be punitive, thank you, and that nature, and so I'm pleased to hear that you're receptive, that you're attending the principals' meetings, because we learn from each other, and following this young man and the team that, that works with him, if you, you know, take on some of the suggestions or pieces that he's presenting, you will be pleased in the end, what's going to happen. Already, one has already been answered for you, because of how the graduation piece lags, but the rest is right out there for you, okay? Alrighty. Thank you, Mr. Hinky, alright, we are now ready to, as a board, to make a decision, either to approve the school improvement plan with monitoring actions, approve the school improvement plan with conditions and monitoring actions, or deny with reasons for denial, and date to submit a revised school improvement plan, so that's where we are, and so we are now ready.
Can you repeat them again?
Okay, number one, approve the school improvement plan with monitoring actions?
Madam Chair?
Or approve it with conditions and monitoring actions, which is what we kind of have done in...
Well, I'd like...
Okay, or deny.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Edge's SIP plan with conditions and monitoring action.
I was going to say the same thing, but I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Mrs. Jane Crawford, that we accept Edge's school improvement plan with conditions and monitoring actions, and it was seconded by Mr. David Buckles, all in favor of this?
This...
This motion?
This motion.
Let it be known by the word aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposers, hearing none, motion carries five zero. Okay? Alrighty, I'm just...
And I wish, I truly wish you guys well, hope it's a good year, it's going to be hard, it always is.
Okay, at this time, we're...
Madam Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The superintendent just wanted to be sure that there was discussion that was provided after the motion and the second on the vote, would you mind asking the board members if there were any, if there was any further discussion that needed to...
No problem.
Do we need to, do we need to rescind the motion and the...
After the motion and second, before we voted, you want to know if there are any questions, so do you want us to just rescind and do it all over again? If that be...
Yeah, just for the sake of there being no question at all?
Yes, okay, alright.
I rescind my motion.
And I rescind my second, but that's not necessarily the motion.
Okay, alright, so now.
Then you would rescind your motion, and at this time, the chair will allow for any discussion after that.
After the second, before we vote.
I made a motion that we approve Edge's SIP plan with monitor, with conditions and monitoring.
Yes.
And I seconded that, but the only, the only thing I would say is that, you know, most of this is a prescribed, state-prescribed monitoring anyway, but our district will be monitoring them, so, I mean, we don't want to monitor them to death, we just want to make sure that they follow what they say, and we're apprised of the updates from time to time, does anyone else have a question?
And our conditions and monitoring has been recorded, I mean, we have a copy of that, yes, so...
Sharon should have a copy.
Okay, then, it's been motioned by Mrs. Crawford, that we approve their Edge's school improvement plan with conditions of monitoring and other actions that have been listed, it was seconded by Mr. David Buckles, alright, at this time, we are now open for discussion, you know, clarif...
Can I ask the superintendent a question?
Questions for clarification, et cetera.
Do you have something that you need us to act on, to...
Consider.
To consider with this, anything in particular?
Jonathan, any recommendations, anything that they, as far as this motion?
That we may have missed, or...
I want them to understand what that, with the conditions and monitoring, what that really means, and how it impacts the timeline.
It's serious, serious business, yeah.
So I think it's important that with the school improvement plan, you make sure that, do you, the board needs to agree that you, that everything that's requested in those nine items has been met, so if you would look at those nine items that are to be addressed, if you approve it with conditions, then you're saying that there is something that was not addressed, that needs to be addressed when, at another board meeting, so when you look through the nine things, if you're good that they've met everything, then just approve the SIP with monitoring, if you feel like there is an item that has not been addressed today, or in the SIP, then you could approve it, but with the condition that they come back and present on like number six, or number seven, or something that you feel wasn't met.
So she needs, in her motion, I'm suggesting, does she need to specify which of the nine?
Yes.
Is not being met, just for clarification?
Yes, the condition of which one needs to be addressed, if you look at the nine items.
My comment earlier to Jonathan and the Instructional Division was that they, they ensure compliance of these nine items for us as our protege, so, I mean, it is our liaison, but if this is something you think...
I, well, I just, I want to clarify, though, that it is actually, the school board, as the sponsor of charter schools, to, that this is in-state board, your responsibility to monitor and to approve, and we will support you in that, but we are not, as just district staff, responsible for doing the monitoring, it is the school board's responsibility as the sponsor.
No, but since, since we are a policymaking body, and you guys work at the pleasure of our chief executive officer, we expect any, anything that might not be up to, up to par, or inappropriate, to be reported to us ASAP.
Okay.
I mean, I think we can bring back information, so you can make a decision.
Okay, in looking at it, item number four, 4A, alright, school improvement plan, 4A says, "Analysis of student performance data, including academic performance by each subgroup," remember, we talked about students with disability?
And that was shared, yes.
So now, in the motion to...
I'm not going to be able to do all that. We need to decide which of these, though, have not been met, and...
Okay, if you, if you look on this, it, it states that according to, unless changes were made, that, that it's not explicitly stated six or seven, it's only partially on eight, and number nine was not explicitly addressed, so can't we, could we bring...
So number six is the identification of each component of the school's approved educational program that has not been implemented, as described in the school's approved charter application or charter contract.
I'll make, I'll make, I'll make a motion.
No, we need to keep doing, finish doing this.
Okay, well, keep doing it.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not, I'm good.
So number six has not been addressed explicitly, so that...
In our review, we did not feel like that was addressed today, correct?
Number seven...
Hold on.
All you got to do is put in your motion is that all nine are in compliance?
They aren't, David. But they are, David, that's what we're trying to...
Well, then, they, and give them till the November meeting to show and demonstrate the compliance on where they didn't give it to us.
That's what we're trying to figure out now.
Oh, okay, I thought you could word it that way, I didn't mean that, I'll be...
Okay, so number eight is only partially addressed, correct?
Because it relates back to what's in the charter and what they are currently not doing, or are doing.
So...
Okay, and that was what Mr. McInnes alluded to, but said, "I'll wait later to get the charter," because he, he did not, wasn't aware that this was in there.
Or he wasn't aware.
Well, then, probably, and the board attorney might could answer this, probably the course of action would be to not approve the charter, or not approve it until we have the nine items that suffice what we've asked for.
Well, I think the, the way that the motion is written, and what it's provided for, is that you can approve it on a condition, so if they come back with the nine specified items, then you would approve the SIP.
I felt comfortable with that, but if this board doesn't, I mean...
Okay, and then it also says, in 4A, that these nine items are at a minimum, and so those additional conditions...
Have been placed on.
That, or remember Crawford stated in the public forum...
Requested, yes.
...needed to be taken care of, would be additional...
Very important.
...conditions.
Okay.
And that, that, all of that is combined under your motion of conditions.
Yeah, so she's already, her nine items are, these nine items are already in her motion?
The nine items in the motion?
Okay.
Plus those...
Additional.
Additional conditions that you read off.
Do I have to say that in my motion, or is that...
As long as the board understands that that is what...
The nine items.
...the word "conditions" means in the motion.
Which are, the nine items are, number one, required plans, number two, notifications, number three, appearances, number four, school improvement plans, number five, approvals, number six, corrective actions, number seven, monitor... number six, corrective actions; number seven, monitoring; and number eight, waivers of termination. And that, those are the eight.
It's through there, but all you gotta do is say, is say that nine items contained in Charter School Corrective Action School Improvement Plan 6A-1.099827, and then...
Yeah.
Read that.
You can take that.
Read that.
And read that as your motion.
Board Chair.
These are, these are the...
Board Chair, if I may.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So I would make a recommendation today, from our district staff review, that you approve the plan with the conditions that they come back and address numbers six, seven, and nine.
Six, seven, and nine.
I would think, I would, as a board member, prefer that we just do all nine.
Along with that, you then have monitoring, you have identified as a board today, a number of monitoring actions that you wish to, to either have happen or for the school to come back and report in November or January, are the two months, I believe, you requested to have a presentation under old business or unfinished business, so that you can continue to get monitoring updates from Edge. So again, my recommendation would be...
Charlie Hill.
...to approve the plan with the conditions that they come back on November 5th and address numbers six, seven, and nine in more detail, and at the same time, you are approving the monitoring that has been discussed and noted during your board discussion.
Okay.
That expressly outlined by board members.
Expressly outlined.
Yes.
Representative from the charter.
Six, expressly. Okay. All right. I make a motion that we approve, that we approve Edge's SIP plan with the conditions, correct? Monitoring and conditions six, seven, and nine, and that you come back in November to report to us, plus we, that we need to be in receipt of the items that were expressly outlined to Dr. Swift.
Charlie, does that meet the, what you feel comfortable with?
That sums up, in my opinion, and seeing Jonathan...
All right, I'll second that motion. Now, if we got any more discussion?
No.
Okay, any, any discussion? All right, it's been moved by Mrs. Crawford that we accept Edge's school improvement plan with the conditions that item six, seven, and nine, they come back with more details and to accept the monitoring pieces that were given to Dr. Swift.
And one more part in the discussion. I might advise the board chair to ask the representative from the charter school if there's any uncertainty or initial clarification that they need based on the motion that they've...
Before we vote.
Before the vote goes.
Yes, okay, all right. Hearing from our attorney, I'm going to ask Mr. Swift or the other representatives from Edge, is there anything that you are unclear about or you need clarification, or you may have some concerns about?
Dr. Swift, can you come up here? Yeah.
And thank you. That makes sense. That's, that's good. I like that. I taught you well.
My only request is that with everything that you stated and also what you've read off, is that can we receive electronic copy of that information so that we have documentation on what need, needs to happen? And so there, if, you know, there is no discrepancy of what needs to be presented, and if there's a timeline for what needs to be presented in November versus January, can we get an explicit outline of that?
Okay.
Okay, well, then I need that back.
All right.
You need this back?
You're my only cost.
And so, we, we're going to request from Mr. Hinky as the director of school improvement that he would take on this, make sure Dr. Swift gets an electronic copy, and with the timeline and the things that we specified.
And I would be more than happy to do that on your behalf. It'll be very similar to the letter we provided them earlier that kind of outlined the expectations for this meeting, and we had a very clear timeline in there in reference to the state board rule, and so we will absolutely do that.
And, and could we request that each board member get a copy of that same letter that you're going to send him?
Yes.
Is that...
E-mailed?
Yes.
Like, we can email that out?
If you would email that to each of us.
Absolutely.
And would you do, do me a favor, since I'm the senior board member in age, would you text me and say, "Send this on there"? Please.
Okay.
So I'll...
I will make sure you get it.
I, I, I do better than David, but I wanna know when it's on there so I can jump on it and do it. Okay. Thank you, sir.
If you would just ask if there's any final discussion and then the vote.
Any final discussion prior to the vote, I'm gonna call Mrs. Pickens.
No.
Mr. Buckles.
No, ma'am.
All right, Mr. McInnis?
No.
Mrs. Crawford?
No.
And I have none. All right, so now, we're ready for the vote. All right, it's been motioned by Mrs. Crawford and seconded by Mr. Buckles, the conditions and the acceptance of Edge's school improvement plan with the items we've already mentioned. All in favor, let it be known by the word aye. Aye. Opposers, same sign, hearing none. Motion carries five zero.
And we can, let me just clarify, we can provide a copy of the charter for each of you?
Yes, sir.
Just, we can make copies?
I think it's a very large notebook in Sharon's office. I think probably the relevant pieces, like the curriculum and things like the, what the charter has, would be pieces to have. There's, it's probably like 150 pages.
Ooh, keep that.
It's probably changed since that... So I think that maybe there's a couple of sections in there.
The relevant part they need for this.
I think so.
So, can we, can we email that to them, scan an email? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just, just kind of from my information, obviously, the curriculum has, do we update that information? I mean, should we? Maybe that should be the question, should we update?
And Ms. Freeman may be able to address this a little bit clearer, but in my research, we have an application for the charter, which is in Sharon's office, and it's quite lengthy and it's a notebook, and it's all the pieces they had to actually put to the board to get their application for charter school approved. In 2015, they came back and asked for a update so that they could progress with the loan, but in that update, it states that they will still be using the charter in that application. So I think we go back to that application to find out what the purpose of the charter was, and I'll go back and I'll look, and actually, I'll probably meet with our attorneys to make sure that that's what they feel that says, and we can find the relevant pieces for them.
Okay. Before we move to our reports, I certainly would be remiss if we did not thank the leadership team for assisting us and walking us through this, because there are pieces that we haven't been in it but out of it for so long, we don't remember, and you brought us up to speed, and we thank you, Mr. Hinky, and, and I know Mrs. France worked with us. We thank the entire leadership team. Dr. Swift, your presentation, we thank you for that, and, and how you've come in, certainly, probably not under the best of circumstances, but look like you're trying to right the ship. And we appreciate that.
And can I just say this, just for the betterment of the group? Understanding the severity in which I came into these, into this county and the state of which Putnam County is in, my only request is that when they, I've never worked in a district where I did not have the, the support and the relationship of each department in the district to ensure the overall success of the school. So being, having that said, transparency and the ability to be open and candid with resources and information, whether it does not pertain to us as a charter school or not, just being more flexible in assisting as we right this ship and get everybody back in the right direction. I think that we are truly all in the same boat when we look at Putnam County schools and make sure that all the schools are successful within the county, but we cannot make that happen if we're working against one another or in isolation. So, as I said before, my staff is brand new to Putnam County, obviously, I'm new to it. Give us the opportunity and a chance to right the ship before you just take what has happened and mirror that same past experience on my leadership, and that will be my only request to the board and to the school district.
Thank you, Madam.
Alrighty. Anything else to... All right, at this time, we will now entertain our reports. Mrs. Crawford, we'll start with you and move to your left.
I was mostly tied up with my grandson, so I have nothing to report.
Is he doing fine?
He's just brilliant, yes.
Okay. At the grandma.
Yeah, he's walking full speed now and getting into everything, and he's wonderful.
Okay.
Takes after his granddaddy.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Crawford. Mr. McInnis?
Um, I wanna congratulate again all the perfect scores that we saw. The presentation is outstanding. Pat on the back, high five, yay. And the Rams won Friday night. It was not pretty. Very generous home team that would give up so many things, but they pull it out. And they're off this Friday, but they'll be back next Friday against Bell, I understand. And a little report or an update on the Imagination Library. Spoke with Ms. Moore's today. There's 503 children that are registered now, and there's three that are pending with address corrections, and she said that five have already graduated from the program, so wanna continue that program's success. And that's it.
Oh, you have me at this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Buckles?
Uh, yes.
Give Holly one.
Hurry, hurry. There you go. I mentioned at a prior board meeting about handicapped parking, I had received a call from a teacher that was handicapped, or either her husband was, at a local school, and the principal became agitated, as the story goes, because they reported a non-handicapped marked vehicle in a handicapped parking place, and I mentioned it to the superintendent, and if you'd just let staff know to make sure they kinda monitor, even if it's their secretary or whoever, you know, and not knowing, I'm, I'm not gonna go any further into that, but there's, there are people out there who, who do depend on that each and every day. The other, we, we were kinda tied up in a potential litigation with CSX Railroad, and I think the superintendent got with the board attorney and got that straightened out. I think the newspaper reported, we were first, early on, encouraged to be in the, the decision at Satsuma Railroad crossing that goes to Buffalo Bluff, that just, you know, superintendent wisely got Mr. Douglas, got it, got it straightened out and had us removed from that, and anytime we have something like that, we, we talked about, Rick was out of town, an emergency board meeting, but there was no way to do that. But anyway, it's all, it all worked out good. Rick, I appreciate you taking time out of the meeting and getting that resolved, and Charlie as well.
And I was on the phone with the sheriff, and I just said, you know, keep us abreast.
I know. But when it gets written, it's, you know, there's so many people that wanna make something out of nothing that you never, never know, but...
Our board attorney was right on top of it.
He was right there, yeah.
Yep, he was right there.
Charlie was right there. And the other is, I recently spoke about 70/20 and the zero tolerance. I served on the expulsion committee this morning, and that term zero tolerance raised its ugly head again today, so we're once again back in a corner where you, you can't use good judgment with kids on many occasions, and you're locked in a hole with the word zero tolerance, so...
Zero tolerance for what?
For discipline and related to school safety and security. But anyway, with that, that was my dissatisfaction, but I'm very pleased. I'll be going to a Palacahay volleyball game just as soon as we dismiss.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles.
I'll go, I'll be at the budget here.
Okay. We're making good time.
I wanna hear Rhonda read.
I, I did have the opportunity to go to open house at Miller Middle, and it was a really good turnout. Title I was meeting also at that time, and it was, it's always neat to see former students and their children and kind of know that you have a relationship with them.
Yes.
And also to Crescent City High School last night, it was probably one of the best-attended open houses that I, I've been around at Crescent City High School, so, and there was no food involved. It was just...
They came.
They just came. And one thing that they did do is they passed out progress reports when the parents signed in, and so there were quite a few conversations going down the hall between parent and student. I thought it was a great idea.
Didn't have to call the cops.
And then, the rest of the week, I, I will be helping Crescent City do retakes for FSA, so that'll be fun. I love getting back in the school. I, I feel very, very comfortable there, so hopefully, they won't have to retake a retake.
Thank you, Mrs. Pickens, and, and thank all of you for what you do. Just two real quick things. 9/11 celebration, 18 years last Wednesday, and I wanna thank Mr. Thomas Bowlin. He's gone. He was at the one at the governmental building, and I'm sure Superintendent Searance, you were out of town, and so they did represent well. And Mrs. Laura France was at the cry-out for Putnam County, representing, and it's always good to look up and to see people that are part of the educational system there, because it sends a powerful message to our constituents, to the people we serve, our stakeholders, and thank you. And just with these perfect scores, I mean, I was blown away. I just, it's just my hopes that the schools, the individual schools, will make a big deal of it. You know, say something so these other kids will say, "Man," you know, and, and don't just let it end here, because chances are, they may not see this, so... And, but that said, Holly, I won't be doing any retakes, but Thursday, I will be announcing the junior varsity football game. That will be the first one, because one was canceled because of Dorian, because they had to switch things around. But anyway, all right, Mr. Attorney.
In the interest of time and getting us to the 505 budget meeting, everything is going well in the legal department.
Sweet.
And thank you for guiding us through. I mean, it, it doesn't offend us at all. I mean, I, I would rather err on allowing you to guide us than to make a mistake that could cost us in the end. Again, thank you for that.
Just don't mess up.
He won't. He won't. He never did.
I'm just...
Eight, I...
I want to thank Charlie again and his staff. They are having hours here and just working very close with us, so, yeah, so Lex Taylor
and Charlie spend some time with us and, you know, 'cause we have a lot of legal things we have to deal with, so we pick their brain every day that they're here. I handed out to you a recommended list of dates. This is for, this is something you'll be looking at in November at the reorganization meeting, but wanna go ahead and give that to you, let you look at your calendars, and you will notice there are, in December, in January, December of 19 and January of 20, we have reduced that to one meeting each month, and then again in July of 20, which we normally do. But because of the FSBA, and I know there's training and all, we decided to recommend just be in one meeting that month. So again, we can decide that in November. Just wanna give that to you for you to review.
Well, while everyone's reviewing it and so we can be prepared in November, I, there are no night meetings on here, and I want those added like we did this year. So we need to consider which dates we want for night meetings.
But you'll have time to do that. I mean, we just wanna put these in front of...
Well, I mean, we're gonna take the time at the board meeting to decide which ones will be at night.
When you vote on it, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll be on the agenda for you to review.
I just figured it could be done.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, 505. That's what he's trying to do, but, but I, I like that, too.
Now, let me, I, I sent you, in the interest of time, I sent you an email to all the board members, and, and this is time-sensitive. And this is time sensitive. So in, of course, on October 1st is a regular meeting. October 2nd, please put on your calendar, at 3 o'clock, there will be a workshop for the Insurance Committee to make a recommendation for group health insurance. So that's Wednesday, April the 2nd, I'm sorry, October 2nd at 3 o'clock.
And all of us are allowed to come? This is not the committee?
Okay, this is a workshop.
So we can come to the workshop?
Yeah, that's a board workshop.
Just want to make sure.
Right. And again, the Insurance Committee meetings are being held in executive session. So I think you've received information about that. On October 3rd, at 3:30, there is a special called Board Meeting to vote on the insurance recommendation. So we've separated that out just so there's plenty of time for discussion, and it doesn't take away from regular board meetings.
That's Thursday the 3rd.
Thursday, October 3rd at 3:30. October 15th, and this is in the email I sent you, October 15th is a 6 o'clock board meeting, regular board meeting. And on October 24th, this is a special called Board Meeting at 10:00 a.m., 10:00 a.m. for the purpose of reviewing the FSAT. Travis Weaver, that's the assessment tool we use for security. He's going to be reviewing that information, and there will be part of that meeting will be in executive session that deals with school security.
Okay, for my slow pen, would you give us, give it, repeat the one after the 15, 15?
10:24. October 24th.
October 24th.
10:00 a.m.
10:00 a.m. meeting. The FSAT, which is F-S-S-A-T.
Sharon, you'll have all this down so I can come by and say you want.
That's in an email to you. Yeah, all that, all that information I just read to you is in that email. And real quick.
Got you.
We got three minutes. Let me tell you, two more quick things. Dad's Day is the 25th of September. So we encourage our dads, I've been on the radio today, encouraging dads to come out and visit their schools.
The 25th?
25th. And it's on our Facebook page if you want more information.
Some have gone like a dad.
And very important, this Friday at 9:00, and again, I'll be out of town, but I have some of our staff filling in for me. Quinn Studer will be at the Board of County Commissioners at 9:00 a.m., and he will be addressing the revitalization effort, which our school district is a big part of. And I think it would be very nice if we had board members there because, if you can, if you're available. And some of our staff will be there, but, you know, we are making great strides in, as a county and as a city, trying to move towards revitalization.
This is 9:00.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
8:00 a.m., okay. Thank you, sir. Is there anything else to come before the board? We have less than a minute before we declare this meeting closed. If there is none, this meeting is adjourned. Okay, we are now in special, special, session.
Okay, Madam Chair, we're in our final budget hearing.
Yes, sir.
September 17th, 2019. In accordance with Section 200.065 in Chapters 10, 10, and 10, 11 of the Florida statutes, I previously submitted a tentative balance budget for the 2019-2020 school year and recommended the millage to be levied. On July 23rd of 2019, you approved the tentative budget and millage for advertising. From July 30th, 2019, you approved the tentative millage and budgets. The purpose of today's public hearing is to adopt a resolution or ordinance stating the millage rate to be levied and to amend the proposed final budget as you see fit. That budget will then can, will then become the official District School Board of Putnam County Budget for fiscal year 2019-2020. And Ms. Odom is here to answer your questions.
And we're going to make this really brief. We are here today to adopt the final budget. We've got to adopt the millage rates and the dollar amounts. You've each been given a very small amount of handouts that we will go through that you're going to see some of those for the third time, but it's things that I have to do in order to follow Florida truth in millage. I've cut down tremendously. I don't have all those informational handouts or anything like that, so we are going to make this very, very quick. The first thing that I'm required to do is, again, third time now, talk about the rollback rate in order for me to be in compliance with the Florida Truth in Millage TRIM guidelines. And of course, as you know, the rollback rate is the millage rate that it would take to bring into the school district the exact amount of tax revenue that we brought in last year and not including the effects of new construction. That rollback rate, according to your handout, is 5.8709 mills. And our proposed millage of 5.8690 mills will bring in 99.967% of the tax revenues that we received last year. So our proposed millage rate is 0.033% less than the rollback rate. We don't really have to go over the other pages of it. Just know that our millage rate is 0.286 less than last year, and that's all attributable to a decrease in the required local effort that is set by the Florida Legislature.
Is that something we have to do, lower the millage rate?
Yes, we do. The only way that we can set a millage rate higher than the required local millage rate and the discretionary and capital outlay is to go before the voters in a general election and ask for a higher millage rate.
Because I had two former teachers, retired teachers, text me and asked me, why did they?
Exactly, and my husband.
Miss that.
Yeah. Every year, he asks me, why, the district needs the money, why are you lowering the millage rate?
It has to do with rising property values.
It's what we have to do, you know. The only way, we are allowed to have up to 10 mills for a school district, but you do have to go before the voters and get that approved. And then it's, it can be good for up to four years, and then you have to go before the voters. Again, a lot of school districts do that, but that's not something we tried one time and one time only and just haven't found the appropriate time that we felt like would be a good time for our public to have a, you know, additional millage and everything. We could go bond issues, or we could go increase millage or sales tax, but all of those take special elections and everything. Okay, so after that, I think the next item that I want to briefly discuss is the little one-page compression of our budget summarized by fund type, revenue source, and expenditure function. Not going to go into detail. This just changed slightly from our tentative budget and the, which was also exactly as the advertised budget. And it's because for our Nefec funds, we are required to treat them like a business entity. So we have to actually post depreciation on their assets. We have to post for compensated absences. That's how much they would have to pay out if everybody left at one time, and we had to pay out their leave on the books and other post-employment benefits like retirement and things like that. So those Nefec funds did change because of those posting of expenditures. And those, posting those liabilities like that's required by Governmental Accounting Standards Board since they do have to be treated as a business entity. The other funds may have had small dollar amount changes, and that was just because maybe an additional accounts receivable came in or some type of correction we found as we were going through made. Again, the detailed budget is provided in a notebook in your mailroom that has been updated to this final budget page, and it's broken down line by line, cost center by cost center. And that's several hundred pages, but we've compressed it down to a one-page document that's required by TRIM guidelines. And the final two handouts that I have, Andrea printed them out, but they are on your board docs also, is the Board Resolution Determining the Revenues and Millages Levied and the Resolution Adopting the Actual Budget that will be transmitted to Tallahassee tomorrow in the format that they require. That format that you've got in that last handout is more than the one-page compression, has more detail, but it's not near as comprehensive as the thing that you have in the mailroom. But it's just different. DOE wants it one way, Department of Revenue wants it one way, and I've given you all everything. So the numbers are all the same. It's just presented in three very, very different formats. And so really, that's all I have. And before we go to roll call vote, I wanted to see if there's any questions for me on any of the information I provided. I know this is like ad nauseam because you've heard it three times in a row, so I didn't really want to take a lot of your time today since at the tentative hearing, we went through all kinds of stuff.
Definitely.
I will say that I don't think we've had one person from the public come in.
We have not.
We never have. Travis is public.
No, he's on, he's on board time.
He said he was only here to verify that his raise was in this budget that I'm presenting today.
Yeah, get him a high chair.
Maybe Oliver's here from the paper. He's public.
He's public, exactly.
I'm telling you, what you all do with numbers and stuff and.
It's what I love.
That thing that you had, the superintendent's report or whatever it is with every penny that's accounted. Oh, my God, the red book. I was thinking of the red book and this, but I tell you.
Superintendent, you going to read this, or Rhonda, you going to read it?
I believe that Charlie does this for us. He has to take a roll call vote.
Help, Jan will help you on reading some of those words, Charlie.
He has it. He's with it.
And that's, you got that page?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, what you'll do is ask for a motion in a second on each one. Any discussion, and then we'll do a roll call vote. Yeah, if you would like to go ahead and ask for a motion.
All right.
Item one.
So, oh, just one sec. So we have to ask for motion on each one?
Aren't you going to read them first?
Yeah, that, it has to be read into the minutes, yes.
And read it in the form of the motion.
All right, Madam Chairman.
Well, she's got to ask.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Item number one, the final required local effort millage rate of 3.621 mills.
I make a motion that we approve, number one. The approve, approve the final required local effort millage rate of 3.621 mills.
Second it.
All right, it's been motion by Mrs. Crawford that we accept. Item number one, the final required local effort millage rate of 3.621 mills. And second by Mr. McInnes. All in favor?
Any discussion on that?
Oh, and we have to have discussion after each, okay?
If there's any discussion, just ask.
Any discussion. Hearing none? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Poses, hearing none. Motion carries, five, zero.
Roll call vote.
Roll call.
Yes, District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
Okay, item number two, final discretionary millage rate of 0.748 mills.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the final discretionary millage rate of 0.748 mills.
I second.
All right, motion by Mr. Buckles that we approve final discretionary millage rate of 0.748 mills. And second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. Any discussion? Hearing none?
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
Okay. Final, number three, final capital outlay millage rate of 1.500 mills.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the final capital outlay millage rate of 1.500 mills.
Second it.
All right, it's been motion by Mrs. Pickens that we accept the final capital outlay millage rate of 1.500 mills. And second by Mr. McInnes. Any discussion? Hearing none?
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
And District Five?
Yes.
Okay, number four, final total millage rate of 5.869 mills, which is 0.033% below the rollback rate.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the final total millage rate of 5.869 mills, which is 0.033% below the rollback rate.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. McInnes that we approve final total millage rate of 5.869 mills, which is 0.033% below the rollback rate. Discussion? Hearing none?
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
Okay, final general fund budget of 101,191,662.79.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final general fund budget of 101,191,662.79.
Second it.
Okay, it's been motion by Mrs. Crawford that we accept the final general fund budget of 101,191,662.79. And second by Mr. McInnes. Discussion? Hearing none?
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yeah.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
All right, final debt service fund budget of 114,192.33.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the final debt service fund's budget of 114,192.33.
I second that.
All right, motion by Mrs. Pickens that we accept the final debt service fund budget of 114,192.33. And second by Mr. Buckles. Discussion? Hearing none?
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
Final capital project funds budget of 12,273,411.92.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion, we approve final capital projects funds budget of 12,273,411.92. Second it.
All right, motion by Mr. Buckles that we approve the final capital project fund budget of 12,273,411.92. And second by Mr. McInnes. Discussion? Hearing none?
District One?
Yes.
District Two? District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
Final special revenue funds budget of 18,86,403.71.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the final special revenue funds budget of 18,86,403.71.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Mr. McInnes that we approve final special revenue budget, funds budget of 18,86,403.71. And second by Mrs. Crawford. Discussion? Hearing none?
District One?
Yes.
District Two? District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
Final internal service funds budget of 32,663,467.4.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the final internal service funds budget of 32,663,467.4.
I second that.
All right, motion by Mrs. Pickens that we approve final internal service funds budget of 32,663,467.4. And second by Mr. Buckles. Discussion? Hearing none?
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
Final trust and agency funds budget of 135,793.5.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve final trust and agency funds budget of 135,793.5. Second it.
All right, motion by Mr. Buckles to approve final trust and agency funds budget of 135,793.5. And second by Mr. McInnes. Discussion? Hearing none?
District One?
Yes.
District Two? District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
Okay. Eleven, final enterprise funds budget of 25,356,40.52.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the final enterprise funds budget of 25,356,40.52.
I second.
All right, motion by Mr. McInnes that we approve the final enterprise fund budget of 25,356,40.52. And second by Mrs. Pickens. Discussion? Hearing none?
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
All right. Approved total district fund budget in its entirety of 189,820,971.36.
I make a motion that we approve the total district final budget in its entirety of 189,820,971.36.
All right, been motion by Mrs. Crawford that we approve the total district final budget in its entirety of 189,820,971.36. And second by Mr. McInnes. Discussion?
None.
Hearing none?
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
Okay, approve, approve the resolution determining revenues and millages levied for 2019-2020.
I make a motion, Madam Chair, that we approve the resolution determining revenues and millages levied for 2019 and 2020.
I second.
All right, motion by Mr. Buckles that we approve the resolutions determining revenues and millages levied for 2019-2020, and second by Mrs. Pickens. Discussion? Hearing none?
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
Approve resolution adopting the district summary budget for 2019-2020.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the resolution adopting the district summary budget for 2019-2020.
I second that, Madam.
All right, approve, I mean, motion by Mrs. Pickens that we approve the resolution adopting the district summary budget for 2019-2020, and second by Mr. Buckles. Discussion? Hearing none?
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?